Welcome to the November twenty second, two thousand twenty-two City of Broussard Council Meeting. Please silence your cell phones and if anyone from the audience would like to make a comment on an item listed on the the agenda, please fill out a blue card located at the back of the room and turn it into our city clerk. Each speaker will give be given a maximum of five minutes. Please rise for the pledge. Councilman Gary, would you lead us in a prayer?
We, the members of the Broussard City Council, beg of thee, almighty God, to enlighten our minds so our work will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land and fulfilling also thy holy will on earth and in heaven to Christ our Lord. Amen.
Item two point one, acceptance of the minutes of the October twenty twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Do we have a motion to accept?
I move.
The minutes were supplied in the council's packet. Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Item three point one, approval of the September two thousand twenty-two and October two thousand twenty-two financial reports. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second.
Our presenter tonight is Karen Fontenot. Welcome Karen.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we're gonna revisit the September financials. I had computer issues and I reran the financials as of the wrong date. So what I thought was September financials had about three weeks of extra data. So we reran them. They're in your packets. Every department was under budget in September. So that was what I expected to see when I started digging into it. It it just didn't make sense. Um, for October, we have two departments that are over budget. However, it's due to the fact that in October, November and December, we pay a lot of annual insurance premiums. October had our workers' comp premium. These two departments got the biggest chunk of it. It will self-correct. Other than that, all of the departments are in line where they need to be. Um, on our revenue side, our most recent sales tax deposit was twenty-seven percent ahead of the same month last year. Fifty-five percent ahead of the year before. It was twenty-four percent over budget. So year to date, we are four hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars ahead of sales tax budget of revenues. Having said that, when you look at the amendments we've made and the ones we will make today, it's keeping up with those. Um, so we don't have a huge surplus, but we have enough to cover those gaps for those projects. So just something to keep in mind that it is stayed balanced so far. Um, does anyone have any questions about any of the items in the packet?
Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comments.
Any further council discussion?
Question.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four point one, Stuart Bro with Southern Lifestyle Development. Variance request for property zoned in Ambassador Commercial zoning district to follow to allow for single-family residential and multifamily residential. Do we have a motion to approve?
A motion. Second.
So Mr. Bro is here tonight to do a presentation to the council about his variance request. Welcome, Mr. Bro.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to address the council about this matter. Um, Allison, let me go to the next slide. Here we go.
There are some maps in the council's package. This says a note for the council, um, and we will have them on screen, also.
Uh, so we're requesting a variance, uh, for this, uh, piece of property that's highlighted in blue on the map. Uh, it's forty-five acre piece currently owned by the Saint Julian family, which, uh, we have under contract to purchase, uh, and, uh, one of the conditions of our purchases is this variance being granted. Uh, as I said, it's about forty-five acres with approximately seventeen hundred, uh, feet on Ambassador Caffrey. Uh, to the west is bordered by Lexi Falls subdivision. To the south, you have some single-family residential. And to the north, you have some vacant property. Um, as noted, this is, uh, zoned Ambassador Commercial, which, uh, only allows for commercial uses. I know that as a matter of policy, uh, developments along Ambassador have, uh, allowed different uses provided that the frontage is reserved for, uh, commercial, uh, development. Here, we are requesting a variance from that policy allowing us to build out only fifty-five percent of the frontage as commercial, with the remainder of the frontage being our multifamily development with an additional, uh, single-family development being behind the commercial and or the multifamily, depending how it how it lays out. And Allison, if we can go ahead, maybe two slides? And so this is just a conceptual plan of what we're looking to do. As you can see, we have the commercial again, uh, at fifty-five percent of the frontage build out. Uh, and the reason why, uh, you know, we've looked at this in a number of ways and attracted this large, uh, particularly with some of the the topographical, uh, issues here is is not going to be feasible to develop entirely commercial. And it only works with the mix of uses that we have, uh, shown here. So we can't, we can't make it feasibly work at forty-five acres of commercial. And we can't even make it work at a hundred percent of the frontage being commercial with the depths that are required. Um, again, this property has actually been for sale for about three years since twenty nineteen. It, the only offers on this property have been for the rear portion to do, uh, residential development, uh, single-family. So we feel that coming in here and getting commercial going in this area, particularly, uh, with the interchange coming in, uh, down at the end of Ambassador Caffrey, that this could really be a catalyst for the area. Uh, we know that Broussard is booming, that you have a lot of employers that continue to to need housing for employees. We also know that, uh, commercial uses often look for rooftops in order to come move into an area. And this area is still is still yet to really catch on for development. So we feel that being in here, getting in here first, building, uh, high-quality, multifamily, single-family and commercial development, which are things that we have experienced doing across the state, nearly across the country, will be a benefit to this area. And, um, you know, we're excited to be looking to do business in Broussard and, uh, we're happy to answer any questions at your.
Much of the development, you said you want to rezone residential of the forty-five acres?
What we're asking for is for a variance allowing the, uh, only fifty-five percent of the frontage to be commercial. So we don't have specifically the acreage. Oh, we do actually have acreage, uh, breakdowns, uh, on the map. But I'm, and maybe Mr. Deloner, you could help clarify. Do we, we need a variance for the whole piece of property or just the frontage? So just, just the frontage, uh, build out of fifty-five percent?
When we were designing all this, David, when we were doing the zoning, the more severe is commercial, the less severe is residential. You're allowed to have the less severe on on the commercial development without a variance, as I understand our written ordinance. Uh, because everything up until it can include anything up into commercial, correct?
Uh, councilman, it, the way the C A ordinance is written is that it allows specific use only and residential is excluded on Ambassador Caffrey. The C A is specifically Ambassador Caffrey.
I got you.
And when I, when I talked to Stuart and his development team, there were a couple of key points that I thought were of the biggest concern. Uh, or the precedent, the precedent moving forward was one of those concerns that we had to reserve at least some commercial upfront because the next developer will come. And whatever decision is made tonight is likely to be used as an example. Albertson's Parkway, uh, is probably the closest, uh, example of what the council has has allowed to show what the appetite that the council has in the past, commercial upfront upfront with residential in the rear. So I thought of that when we were talking about this piece because this is the first ask in this regard that I can remember. Um, and this is where they were able to, uh, to to kind of m- meet us at at least those requests and come to the council and see if the council felt the same way, or at least try to try to overcome those concerns. Just one thing I think is worth pointing out is what you're offering on the commercial frontage that is not, I'm sorry, on the out Ambassador frontage that is not commercial would not be multifamily or straight homes. It would be the outer buildings for the multifamily build out, correct? Pool, pool house?
It would not be, it would not be the single-family residential. That would not be on Ambassador. We would put the multifamily use would be the remainder of the frontage. And, uh, we had put in our, in our, uh, requests that the clubhouse and the, uh, leasing office and those types of use, uh, portions of the multifamily would be at the front to more complement, to better complement the commercial nature of the corridor.
Right. So C frame Ambassador would be more of those commercial-looking buildings.
Right. And and I think we, if you go forward, uh, one side, these are, uh, two of these are developments that we did. Another one is is, or the other two, a partner did, who would be working with us on this, uh, multifamily project. As you can see, uh, you know, these are the types of buildings that would be in the front, much more commercial-looking in nature. Happy to work with the city to to, you know, get the best product for everybody. But that is something that we, uh, are willing to do.
You've, you've had this kind of mix before and and other developments have been successful?
Absolutely.
With commercial and residential that close?
Yes.
I mean, it's a convenience for residential people to have the storefront situation, so well, the big box.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, as a rule, uh, if it's in a residential or business area, we usually get sent a letter to all directly, uh, connecting property owners. I don't know if that's been done. You don't know, Tina?
No, sir.
Uh, you know, this, even though it's it's commercial property there, these commercial property owners might have some objection or just some, you know, some to say about it. I'd like to see those letters. Before they're sent out.
We did not, uh, send that letter to them.
I think the planning commission will do that, or the T or Sarah would do that.
That would certainly be, uh, sent out when we would, because this is only for a land use variance. When we would still need to come back and with our specific proposal for where the lots are going to be, how the roads are going to be laid out, et cetera. And at that time.
When that goes to the planning commission, then Sarah sends those letters out to the adjacent property.
Well, no, but how can we grant you a variance when we don't even have any, uh, communication with these property owners now? I mean, we can't grant you a variance before the letter goes out. That's like putting the inside of the egg before the shit.
Uh, I've, I, I don't believe it's a rule on the books to grant a variance. It it certainly has been done before, uh, if memory serves, but Oscar could better speak to the legality than I could.
Yeah. Make the project work, also. Without this, there will be no project. And I think it's the main purpose to see how important they can continue the project, but with this very long. It's not. It's a little kind of a hybrid type deal. More than you, you direct the, the spirits of having it so. It has been all come out later from the project.
And if I could add, if I could add.
Contacted none of these up down. That's what I'm, that's the point I'm trying to make. So we're gonna grant this before we even talk to these other landowners or get a notification to them.
If I could just add one thing is that right now, the entirety of the property is commercial, which is as as Mr. Higginbottom noted, is the most intense use. So what would be allowed would be less intense uses. So I'm not, obviously, public input is is important.
Thinking about, you know, I'm s- talking about residence, but th- these are commercial properties here. Maybe they might have some of, some idea what is would do to their values. I don't know. But I'd like to get their opinion.
David, um, it, these kind of hybrid projects are what we're seeing a lot of. And so it's, uh, Sugar Mill Pond, River Ranch, Corray Farms, is all this kind of mix of residential, multifamily and single-family. That's kind of what we're seeing a lot of. And I, just my two cents, that big attract the land. What he's saying is to do all commercial would be a, that'd be a tough. Essentially, we take it out of commerce if we kind of pull fast to that.
David, I think the biggest concern landowners around there are gonna have is the watershed implications. How they're gonna handle runoff. I'm sure they're gonna do their retention. That's gonna be the biggest issue in my mind for surrounding landowners. But we give them the variance. Right. But we give the variance today, they can still have some contradictions from landowners down the road.
That's what I'm saying. If we giving them a variance without.
They'll still have their, their right, their day in court, so to speak, to speak for or against this development when it comes to the planning commission.
Uh, if we go maybe to the next, the first pond? Yeah, we have, uh, correct. We, we've, we've looked at this, uh, quite a bit. I can't read it, uh, but the, quite a bit of acreage out for, for stormwater. Of course, all of that has to go through engineering. Has to be reviewed by Mr. Como, make sure all the math works, all the order is handled, uh, up to the city's standards. And that will all be subject to a public hearing at a, at a later date.
Absolutely. We will require drainage.
Oh, yeah. I have no issue with the variance, essentially, person.
It looks like it's covered at the initial two sides, but the three sides of the property are in this map here. Uh, next fault in the rear.
Correct.
Along Ambassador, you have.
Right to the south and single-family residential as well.
Correct. Yeah, I think this is Diamond Creek right here. On that little, the little cul-de-sac.
In fact, I think we got one of the neighbors here right now.
David, are you good with us giving the variance and then letting the public input down the road? Right. You good with that?
Stuart, just to reconfirm this point, the commercial strip you have up front and then adjacent to that where it would still be residential would be your, basically your accessory buildings.
Correct.
Correct. Uh, I think the, the, the appetite of the city would be that we don't have any buildings that people are housed in up against Ambassador Caffrey to res- to be respectful of that commercial look and in, in continued efforts, commercial development at the roadside.
Correct.
Any further council discussion?
Question.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five point one, resolution number seven-two-nine dash two-two, a resolution declaring the project South Monroe J-Turn Phase One is being substantially complete. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
Our presenter tonight should be someone with Como Engineering. I don't see Mr. Hutchinson here, I don't believe.
Yeah, we did a, a final inspection on the J-Turns. Uh, I'm sure y'all noticed them. Um, everything is right and proper. I, I don't even think we had much of a punch list, David.
So we didn't generate a whole lot of appointments, but what the short punches we had, they did address it and took care of.
I'm very happy with the way it turned out. And I, I don't think anybody's got a lot of feedback once it went into action. I think a lot of people were, uh, worried about it and now they see something that turned out pretty good.
They seem to be performing well. I'm, I'll, I'll test it. I'm, I went through them and.
So we're recommending that, um, the mayor be authorized to sign the certificates of substantial completion so we can wrap it up.
Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five point two, resolution number seven-three-zero dash two-two, a resolution declaring the project Main Street improved Phase One, drainage, multi-use path and pass lighting as being substantially complete. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move. Second.
Mr. Joseph Marino with DDG is here tonight as our presenter. Welcome, Joseph.
Good evening, everybody. Um, pleased to finally get around to, to getting up here on this project. So Main Street Phase One is the sidewalk project, the ten-foot-wide multi-use path, uh, pathway lighting, the subsurface drainage, the box culvert underneath the road. Um, it is, it is, we, we had a substantial completion walk on October eighteenth, uh, where we deemed it substantially complete. We did generate a punch this item, a punch list that, uh, the majority of which has been addressed with the exception of mainly the hydro seeding. I did speak with the contractor this evening, or actually this morning. He told me that there's a little bit of dress-up work they want to do before they come in hydro seed, but with the recent rain, they haven't been able to get in there and do that. But they are su- uh, subject to do that rather soon. We are holding, uh, still about seventy thousand dollars of retainage. So there's plenty of money in the, uh, remaining part of the contract to complete that work. Uh, but nonetheless, we all want to see the project finished, but driving by, you can see that it's, it's, uh, well within use. Uh, I have seen many people using it from time to time, running in the mornings and whatnot. Um, this is not, uh, this does exclude the entry feature, which is a separate contract that's still open. There's a little bit of work left to do there, along with, uh, the landscape contract and the tree lighting contract. So this, uh, shouldn't be construed to be associated with that, uh, substantial completion of that work. But, um, beyond that, I'm here to answer any questions y'all have.
Yes, sir. The hy- hy- excuse me. Go ahead. The hydro seeding process, is that ryegrass? Because you're not gonna get no seed to grow. You planting regular perennial grass.
That's correct. So it's, it's dependent on the time of year. So right now, it's gonna be a ry- a ryegrass blend.
Okay. You'll comply, you're gonna come by and apply again in the spring or this is it? Are y'all gonna apply regular perennial grass in the spring?
It, I guess it depends on how it holds up. So the, there is a one-year warranty period on the project. So in any instance that the contractor, any work that they do that just doesn't hold up, it could be a cracked panel, it could be the, the grass dies and is not growing in the spring, uh, all of which their liability would come in and repair within one year from, uh.
Yeah, come May, you won't have any ryegrasses. You're gonna have to plant something with roots.
Which I don't, I don't think is a only ryegrass seed. I think it's a blend. So some of those seeds that are planted now might, uh, I think the intent is for them to germinate come the springtime, but, uh, we could definitely evaluate that.
Mel, I guess you'd recommend unhulled, unhulled seed for winter time?
Well, and and the, the, uh, the people applying the ryegrass will make that determination. But typically, like Joseph said, we have a one-year warranty and if, if we have any dead spots, they'll come back and readdress it at that time.
But it's usually a blend of, I think, hulled and rye. When it, it, the mix changes depending on the time of year.
Yeah, because we just getting in the winter time. I mean, you're gonna, that hull's not gonna come up if it does come up till May or June. David?
Just for, and just for the record, I got a sidewalk needs to be addressed at Maine and Claire to the house and, uh, two lots from there, I believe. The same lot? They have a, a driveway needs to be installed there. Uh, Walter know, I think Daniel knows where they are. Okay. Well, just for the record, I wanted to put it on the record.
We'll make, we'll make sure that get, that gets added per finished.
Thank you.
Between light number one and light number sixty. Near there. Okay.
Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comments.
Further council? Call for a question.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Item five point three, resolution number seven-three-one dash two-two, a resolution abandoned, abandoning the rear drainage easement on South Jefferson Street behind the Billis at Jefferson and approving the temporary easement given to city by the developer. Do we have motion, a motion to approve?
I move. Second.
Do we have any public comment? Uh, Mel, I'm sorry. It looks like you're the presenter on this.
Yeah, the, the, uh, if, if y'all looked at the resolution, it, it pretty much mirrors what Mr. Guidry had, had agreed to do and, um, we agreed, the council agreed to, uh, with what he said. So that's, the resolution reflects that.
Right. It was discussed at our last meeting.
Correct.
Public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
Council discussion?
Question.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five point four, resolution number seven-three-two dash two-two, a resolution reappointing the following board members to the B E D C board. Uh, the following have terms that will expire twelve-thirty-one-twenty-three. Division A, Claire Abair Marceau. Division A, Anthony Taylor. Division A, Lacy Billet. Division B, Helen T. The rest of the list will expire on twelve-thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Division C, Ryan LaGrange. Division C, John Harold Broussard. Division C, Toby Armentor. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Uh, two of our board members are here tonight, uh, Mr. LaGrange and Mr. Armentor. Welcome, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you guys having us tonight. Um, I know it hasn't been very long since we've spoken to you guys about our achievements, uh, with the B E D C and our successes. Um, just to recount a, a quick recap is the, uh, certified sites. Uh, we currently have five on the books with the one certified site being conducted right now with another certified site, um, waiting for annexation and a couple more in the pipeline. Um, we also have our retail-ready sites, um, which will have seven of those shortly, uh, with the help of the city. Um, that has been a really big success with our commercial realtors. We've had a lot of of reaching out to us and letting us know how much that's really helping them, uh, sell some of these retail sites. So that's, um, that's really a, a really big thing for us right now. Um, we've also had recently a manufacturer's luncheon. Um, we had Meat Bowl, which again, uh, uh,
Big Factory and Stitching Partnership.
There you go. Um, and they, they came in as a state program. There's also a part of, of it's federal. Um, it was very well attended, um, and, and they got a lot of useful information. We were thanked numerous times for having something like that and expressed interest for us continuing those kind of things, uh, for manufacturing. those kind of things uh for manufacturing. On the data that they received was, you know, very useful for them. So we will be planning more of those. We're just glad to get into that that manufacturing, uh since we so have, we have so much of a large manufacturing presence in Broussard. Um and Ryan, I want to talk about some of the uh or give you guys an idea of what's going on with the new people joining the board.
And um just a few other things to piggyback on what Toby mentioned. We do still have plans to continue our developer, real estate developer and commercial realtor luncheon, which usually takes place in the spring. And the Broussard Community Job Fair. We had a great event last year, helping connect companies that are hiring people locally, including some of the large companies that recently moved into town. So we look forward to continuing that great work at the first half of next year. But uh just to give y'all a little, I know you get to see me and Toby quite often here at the meetings. You don't know much about some of our other uh board members that have been serving and some that are um are up for uh appointment tonight. But uh John Harold Broussard currently occupies one of the two-year appointments in Division B, um which was appointed through two thousand twenty-three. However, because of his tenure with the board, we do recommend moving John to Division C. He's also um our chair of the Tourism Committee, which is one of BDC's three big initiatives. Tourism, Community Development, which is quality life initiatives and economic growth. So he heads up that arm of it. Helen Tebow, um we recommend moving Helen into John's unexpired term in Division B. Uh Helen, also her tenure with the board, she serves with our Economic Growth Committee and is also our, uh she's, she lives in the city of Broussard, works professionally as a uh real estate agent with Keller Williams Real Estate. She currently serves on the uh Economic Growth Committee as our resident real estate expert. So as we recently launched the Retail Ready Initiative and of course, continuing the site certification program, identifying sites that might be worthy of being considered is something that Helen helps us point out so that we have those coming um into our pipeline. The next three individuals are all recommended for appointments in Division A. These are one-year term. We'll be back here around this same time next year to request reappointments or new appointments if we have any um any changes at that point. Claire Marceau had uh has an economic development background, uh went before she moved here to the Broussard area and uh came here after starting to work with the Broussard Company Skeeter Contractors. She's part of the Economic Growth Committee and she headed up putting together our manufacturing luncheon that actually attracted about forty-five attendees. Many of our local manufacturers were there to learn about optimizing their business. Uh Anthony Taylor is a representative of a local business. Um he works for Miller Family Companies, which operates two McDonald's locations in Broussard, including the new one that's being built on Saint Nazaire. He also serves on our marketing committee. And then Lacy Biott, below, below, yeah. Um is a new appointment that we're recommending. She um, she is a current resident of Broussard. She's involved in community organizations, including president and founding member of the Kiwanis of Broussard and Youngsville. She also works professionally with the Acadiana Apartment Association and with Broussard's growing population. It's good to have someone in the know of what's going on in the housing market as well. So that's our recommendations and our board members that we're asking you to uh approve for a reappointment and the new appointment.
That's really, really it. Now, I just one more, one more thing is that um the certified sites are really getting hits and they're getting more hits. And we actually had a meeting with a realtor last week, just talking about some things that we want to bring to Broussard and what we foresee. So that activity, and this is again, a realtor that just approached us. Um and and I think those things will continue happening, as many as what we continue to grow those certified sites and this retail ready sites. So um we're gonna keep pushing them out and and trying to get these things done to keep that light shining bright in Broussard. So, thank you, guys.
No public comments.
No public comment? Uh council discussion?
At large? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six? District six? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh item six point one, ordinance number two two dash seven four five. An ordinance annexing certain properties located on and along the southern side of Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad right of way in section thirty-eight. Township eleven south, range five east, Lafayette Parish being known as the David S. Versa J. One annexation in voting district five. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comment.
Council discussion? The the map is located in the council's packet and up on screen.
No, I need a uh call for the question. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yeah.
At large? Motion carries.
Item six point two, ordinance number two two dash seven four six. An ordinance annexing certain properties located on and along the eastern side of Versa J Road in section two. Township eleven south, range five east, Lafayette Parish, being known as the David S. Versa J two annexation in voting district five. Do we have a m- motion to introduce?
I move. Second.
Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comment.
Council discussion, the the map is in the council's packet. It's very close to the same piece of property.
Question.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance number two two dash seven four seven. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by adding the following maps. Map F dash seven, portions of Garber Road and Ibex Road. Map F dash fourteen, portions of Highway ninety-two. Map G dash six, portions of Garber Road. Map G dash seven, portions of Nargirard Road. Map G dash fourteen, areas known as Whispering Meadows Phase Three. And map G dash fifteen, areas known as Whispering Meadows Phase Three. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I make a motion.
Second.
The map is located in the council's packet and also we have the several maps. We have them up on screen. Tina, is there a public comment?
No public comment.
Council discussion?
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six point four, ordinance number two two dash seven four eight. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three operating budget of revenues and expenditures for two hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. City of Broussard portion is one hundred seventy-four thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars. And LCG's portion is ninety-two thousand one hundred thirty-eight and ninety-four cents for the La Nouvelle Road reconstruction project. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I move.
Second.
So um Oscar and Walter can weigh in on this uh to help with the information, but the public bids were sent out, came in, they came in over budget. This project is sta- shared between three entities, the city of Broussard, the city of Lafayette and the parish of Lafayette. We have an IGA in place from months back that the council approved. Um so our funding portion is the additional one hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. And um with the council's approval of that, I will then engage with LCG. I've already verbally talked to them for them to make the same adjustment to to fund their their additional monies. So the project can move forward. I I believe we are, we have a a winner, a a a contractor who has won the award and understands what we need to do to get the budget amendment. So with the council's approval, we'll take the appropriate actions to move forward with our IGA and and with LCG.
Uh really, I I you you covered it well. The the every the.
Are in the council's packet.
They're gonna be in the next packet, because we're gonna have to uh approve the contract to the uh.
We have them here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We we have to uh.
I didn't know, put them in there.
You did. You did a better job than you knew, Tina. But they they are there, just to show the numbers, but um we cannot move far without council consent, so.
Yeah, essentially what we're seeing is what everybody's seeing, rising prices. Our estimates are based on previous work and prices are fluctuating wildly. Asphalt is primarily a um oil product, so everything's just nutso right now. So uh we've already contacted LCG, the mayor's, talked to uh council, the councilman. We've we're talk, we've talked to um the engineering department and we're working our way through all this so we can get the project built.
Tina, is there public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion or questions?
Question.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That was the last item on our agenda for tonight. Thank you, everyone who attended the meeting and our viewers at home. Please drive safely and have a happy Thanksgiving. Meeting adjourned.